Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustments. Chairman, would you please call the meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal built-in board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board's Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of council chambers, as well as the back of the building, and I ask everyone with a cellphone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Roll call, Marie.
Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Daniel Harris?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Jose Alcaraz?
Vice Chair John Scully?
Here.
And Chairman Christopher Avelloni?
Here. Okay, so we'll come back to the Tucker Williams 1201 First Avenue application. Mr. Fox, it's your show.
Thank you. Evening all. Gary Fox, on behalf of the applicant.
Please raise your right hand, sir. You solemnly swear a testimony about the given this matter with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Jason Tucker.
A couple of preliminary remarks. So we're here tonight for the first time to put in the substance of our application. It relates only to design exceptions with regards to fences that exist on the property. We had sent a letter in a long time ago that sort of described how the fences came to be. I'm going to briefly go through that, just so we get a little bit of background, because obviously they're there. Typically, we'd ask for exceptions before we'd put them in, but they're already in there. So I think you need to understand how they got there, and it really was not my client's fault. I'm going to just quickly go through that if we could a little bit, okay? So, and I did send a letter in way back in December of 2021. It's probably buried someplace in your file, but first of all, why don't you state your name for the record, please?
I just did.
Okay.
Why don't I swear in my plan, just in case they need to get into discussion? You solemnly swear a testimony about the given this matter with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay. Please state your name for the record and tell us your affiliation with the board.
Don Gormor.
Okay, thank you.
So we're dealing with property that's located at 1201 First Ave., correct?
Yep.
Block 1705, block 14, correct?
Yes.
And you own this property with who?
My husband.
And?
Tyler, my wife.
Okay. And so when did you and Tyler acquire the property? Is that in 2019?
2019, yep.
And as I understand it, the condition of the property at that time was not very good?
Correct.
And you guys spent a fair amount of time and money in improving the property, correct?
Correct, yes.
And the property is a corner lot, right? It's undersized, and when you moved in, there were certain retaining walls because the actual elevation of the property is above the sidewalk in the street, correct?
Correct, yes.
And so we've submitted some pictures that identify that, but you wanted to put some fences up for privacy, correct?
Correct, yes.
And so what did you do? Were you hired somebody?
Yes, we hired a local contractor.
And what is his name?
David Carpio.
Okay. And was Mr. Carpio supposed to get the permits to do whatever it was that you were going to do?
Yes, and he told us that he was getting the permits, and I sent him our surveys so that he could get the permits and checked with him multiple times.
And so you had a retaining wall along Pine Street, correct, that existed when you moved in?
Yes.
And that was not in very good shape, was it?
Correct, that was falling into the street.
And then you also had a retaining wall along First Ave., correct?
Yes.
And you came, subsequently came to find out, after you did improvements, that those retaining walls were actually not under property, they were in the municipal right-of-way, correct?
Correct, yes. Found that out as part of this process.
Part of this whole process here. So you hired Mr. Caprio, and he actually did two projects for you, right?
Yes, he did the retaining wall first and then the fence later.
And the retaining wall work was for just on Pine Street or for Pine Street and on First Ave.?
Just on Pine Street.
And so what did he have to do there?
He had to tear out the old retaining wall and put in a new one.
Okay. And then what was the second, the second project, about fencing?
That was the fence, yes.
And again, you hired him, you went through the design process with him, he was supposed to go get the permits, as far as you knew, he did. He put up the fences that are there right now, and then you subsequently came to find out that he did not have any permits written.
Exactly, yep.
You subsequently have applied for permits to the city, correct?
Correct, yes.
But they can't issue the permits actually until you get approval from this board that says that whatever it is that's going to be allowed to remain there can remain, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's the background. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, so...
What is your knowledge in reference to permits? Is this your first house?
Yes.
Okay. Permits are important, okay?
Yeah, we know that now.
And how did you become aware that you needed them? What happened?
So as soon as the construction on the fence completed, I received a letter from Michelle Alonso saying that everything looked good, but we needed to submit an application for permits because we hadn't received it. So I immediately emailed the contractor and I asked him to send me copies of the permits, which obviously he didn't have, and that's how I learned that we needed the permit, that we didn't have the permits that he said we did.
Did you pay for permits? Because permits cost money. Did he get checks from you made out to the City of Asbury Park for your permits? Or you were supposed to take care of everything as far as you?
He was supposed to take care of everything, but I do have emails with him saying, let me know how much the permit fee costs and I'll reimburse you, because I had paid for permits when we did our construction on the house.
So the retaining wall that went along Pine?
Yep.
Was there originally a fence on top of that retaining wall?
Yes, it was a white vinyl fence.
It was? And how high was that fence?
About four feet, it was about chest-high.
And the retaining wall, I think we've got the measurement here, is the new retaining wall? Well, I'll get some boards up here, we can...
I was going to give my next question is, the new retaining wall, it's in the exact same spot as the old ones were?
Yes.
Same heights and all that?
Do you happen to have any photos of the previous condition, of the previous wall and fence?
Yes. Are they in the application?
I think they are.
Okay, sorry.
I have so many, if you want me to email them.
In the original application, correct? Not the one?
Way back when.
Hard to know.
Well, do you know, was the retaining wall, was it hot, was it built higher than the original, or was it pretty much the same height? So, and did it, I can tell the retaining wall basically goes from the front to the back of your property, and did, was it extended at all, or was the existing, so you pretty much rebuilt what was there to begin with?
Yes, it's the exact same footprint, and when I argued with the contractor afterwards about the permits, he said we didn't need permits because he was fixing what was there, which also is untrue.
So, you know, obviously, what typically happens in a situation like this is the work gets done, either an inspector drives by, or maybe a neighbor is upset and concerned and calls down to Michelle or the office and says, geez, I noticed all these construction going on, and did they get permits? And then there would be an inspection, and that's how this starts. You know, we tried to find out how it got started, but you know, usually it's not something that Michelle would like to share, because you don't want to have a neighbor issue. But that's probably what happened. Unfortunately, you know, so we had to do a two-step process to get here. So those of you who have not sat through the whole thing, so the retaining walls are actually not on our property. So they're actually not within the jurisdiction of the board here. So fences that are on top of the retaining wall that are not on our property were taken app. So that's why you'll see the report.
Do you have, did you get the right-of-way permission from the city on both Pine and First?
Yes. We have those easements.
Perfect.
Those easements are already recorded, so we actually currently have the right to have those retaining walls on city property.
And that's why we're here tonight only about the fence.
Exactly. So we're here tonight on things that are not on the wall, that's coming down. We're here, that's in the city property, we're here to talk about the fences that are actually on our property, none of which got permits, have applied for them, and pretty much all of them are inconsistent with the zoning ordinance for a number of reasons. And if you look at your planner's report, she very clearly outlines what they are. So one of the things that your planner asked us to do was to give you our survey that we had submitted and marked what was going to be removed, take some updated pictures. You've got some old pictures there. I was trying to see if I could find some, if you'd just bear with me, because the boards, we just put the new ones.
You're looking for the original?
Yes. I don't remember if I have them.
If you don't have them there, I have them on my stomach, and I don't know if it's easy enough to disperse to the board.
It's not going to be that easy to ship. I don't, I don't have the original photos, so why don't we just pull the board up and we'll talk about what currently they're net, okay?
As long as he's testifying that it's, the walls, you know, pretty much the same thing, I'm satisfied.
The walls are outside what we're doing tonight. So why don't you?
Jason, why don't you?
We'll mark the board.
Let's mark each board, and then I'll ask you a couple of questions about them, and then you can tell us what they show.
So I've got three boards here.
A1, A2, A3.
A1, A2, A3, we don't need to mark the application, right?
No, no. Why don't we just have, I mean, Marie?
I get that all the time, I don't know why.
Michelle hasn't been here in three, four years.
She wasn't here, no.
Who's that, Claudia or me?
All day, we know it's good.
A1, A2, A3.
And today's date, please. Yes, it was vinyl, white vinyl.
Jason, while we're doing that, let's, you took the photos?
Yes.
Okay, so did you have personal knowledge of the property, of course, and you can authenticate?
Across the street.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, I'll accept that.
That's directly across the street.
Oh, this is just to compare?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. But then it's just like Vinnie's old house. Is it Vinnie's?
It's on the other side. It's just across, it's not like his house.
Oh, well, like the magic.
This is existing today, yes.
I was wondering if I was just going to stand up here.
But you can see everything, you hold the aluminum.
Okay, so, for record, so we've got three boards here, right?
Yes.
And A1 is, consists of four pictures, correct?
Yes.
So yes, and 1, 2, 3, and 4 are A1, correct?
Yes.
A2, again, consists of additional four pictures, correct? And you've numbered them 5, 6, 7, and 8, right?
Yep.
And A3 is, again, consists of four pictures, 9 through 12.
Exactly.
Correct? And these are photos that we previously submitted to the board, and they should add when they're back.
Yep.
So why don't you?
It's not up to us.
And, rather speed up, so that they might hear your voice and describe what each photograph is, what you intend to depict in show the board.
Oh.
It has to do with Pine Street.
Okay, so what will be helpful here, you mean, it just walks through?
Each photo.
Yeah, just give us a quick.
Yeah, this is for the board and also so that it's a record of what you're saying, so, okay?
So this is, the first photo is from Front Street, this is on our property, just showing the front of the house.
Which one is the first photo?
Number one.
Okay.
Top left.
Well, can't see it from here.
Yeah.
And that's facing First Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
So that's parallel with the front of the house.
Okay.
So where are you standing when you take that picture?
Looking at the house.
From where? You're on First Avenue, and you're looking north, and you're taking a picture of what the house, of what that fence looks like, and that fence is to the east of your house, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So if you're facing your house, this is to the right of the house?
Yes.
And then the second photo down here is the backside of that fence.
And what number is that, what photo is that?
Number 2.
Okay.
Inside, on the inside? Okay, got it.
This is from inside the fence, and on the side yards.
So let me just cut you off with that. So on photo number one, to the right, you'll see the steel fence there?
I know.
Right, on the lower right, correct?
Yes.
That's being removed. Photo number two also shows the steel, and you've actually got a, you've got it taped in to be removed, correct?
That's on photo.
That's on photo 3, okay.
So on photo 3, this is from Pine Street, looking west towards the house, with the retaining wall and the fence, and then the aluminum fence is moved right on the front.
That's the upper right-hand corner? Okay, good.
The bottom one down here is the opposite view, but from inside the property, looking towards Pine Street.
So again, so you've also, you've got some dimensions on there on each of the photos, correct?
Yes.
They're all dimensioned as to the height of the, and so photo 3 really is probably an important one, because that shows the height of the retaining wall along Pine Street is 2 feet 10 inches, correct?
Correct.
And then the, the solid fence above that is 5 feet, another 5 feet 10 inches?
Correct.
Okay.
Gary, is that the fence in the right-of-way or not?
It's not in the right-of-way.
No, okay, because I thought you said it was, okay.
No, so the, so that's actually not on top of the retaining wall, that's inside the retaining wall?
I get it.
So the only fences that were on the retaining wall were the metal fences, the aluminum fences there? Or, or they were in a setback in the front, that, you know, so the right-of-way goes back-aways, so we had to pull all that metal out, you couldn't just have it sticking out, so all of the metal fence is coming out. So all we're really talking about is a wooden fence.
Okay.
And how far back from the retaining wall is that wooden fence, from the edge of the retaining wall?
It's directly behind it.
Okay, thank you.
But the thickness of the wall is still...
Yeah, the wall is about, they're 4 by 4s, but the slats on them, it's about 4 by 10.
So again, just to point out, it is a corner lot. There is really no privacy of a backyard, because you're on the corner, so you're completely open. So I would surmise that the reason you put a fence up is to try to get some privacy on a corner lot.
Exactly, yeah. And because we're so elevated, like being on stage.
So you're sticking up in the air, and you also don't have a real backyard. Okay, let's do the next photograph.
Sure. Okay, so photo 5 is showing the back of the property, so the back of that fence where the gate is, looking east from Pine Street.
And just, again, when you talk, say which photograph you're talking about, what number?
Number 5.
Okay. Number 6?
So number 6 is that same photo from inside the property, so this is this one, showing what that looks like, where the gate is from inside the property, looking east towards Pine Street. And then this is photo 7, showing the fence on the north side of our property, where we're right up against our neighbor's front door. This is number 7. Photo 8 is the other corner, so this is going to be the back corner for the neighbor on the west side of the houses, so they have an elevated deck that's higher than our fence. This is that fence facing west from inside the property.
Before you put up all your fences, did you investigate the ordinance for fences in Asbury at all?
Nope. Our investigation was walking around town and seeing what other people had done.
I see.
And I learned a lot about what Asbury's done in the past. Last board, photo 9.
And I think he assumed probably, did you not, that the fence contractor that you hired was going to get the permits, who actually told you he did work in Asbury, right? He was actually working around the corner, wasn't he?
He's our neighbor. So he lives around the corner on Central Avenue, so he knew, he knew what he couldn't do, not do.
And you said you had just gotten done redoing your house, and you worked with Mark Lutz to do your house, I understand? Did Mark Lutz pull permits for all the work that he did?
Yes.
Yeah? Did you see those permits?
Yes.
Did you pay for those permits?
Yes.
So you knew that there was a?
Yes.
Permit system.
Permit system.
Very aware.
Okay. But your, the fence guy did not trigger anything in you that, oh, well, maybe we need to see a permit or maybe pay for one?
I had told him I would pay for the permits, so I knew that we needed permits and that I would need to pay for them. He just never gave them to me.
With the previous work, were those permits displayed at the time of the work being done?
Can you repeat that?
Did you have the permits in your windows for the house itself?
Probably, yeah.
That's what Mr. Harris is asking.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know, so I'm just, that's the answer I wanted to know. You had them before?
Yeah.
And what makes you think you didn't need them again?
I didn't, I knew I needed permits again. I didn't at any point think I didn't need them.
Did at any point did you demand the man stop work until he put permits in?
Yeah.
Did you ever call City Hall or go to City Hall and go to the zoning or construction office to see?
Yeah, but I just trusted this man.
Have you confronted this man since this time and said, you know, what's going on? How's, he's a neighbor of yours?
Yep.
Well, we kind of need to get through this process to see what it ultimately is going to cost to correct his mistakes before we actually formally...
Based on your pictures.
They can't quantify their damages.
It looks as if you're removing all the aluminum fencing, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, all the aluminum, so this is only about the wooden fence. And so obviously we have height issues, we've got solid versus not solid, you know, are we going to be able to have some privacy in the backyard? You know, now...
You know, privacy is something that we all deal with here, Mr. Fox. It's a major issue for every single resident. You're not alone in that wanting privacy.
And you're not alone living on the corner. There's several of us on the board that live on your property.
You realize that we all have that issue.
Yeah, I'm actually a neighbor of yours. I live three blocks away on a corner.
I live five blocks away on a corner.
Yeah, and I'd love to have a privacy fence up, but I can't.
Right.
Yeah. So is there any way that you feel that you can help comply a bit better to the ordinance, now that I'm sure you've gotten an education? Do you have any plans of what you think might be presentable, you know?
Acceptable.
Acceptable and presentable to us?
So if you, show them the picture of the neighbor across the street. That's, I think, important for you to consider.
This is our immediate next door neighbor. So this is on Pine Street.
Which one?
He's literally...
The last photo.
So, yeah, right. So we're literally at the corner of First and Pine, and on the west, the northwest corner is the PQ, property in question. On the south, on the northeast?
That's right.
Corner?
Yeah.
Is this here? And if you see in the photographs, you can see that they also have...
A solid fence on top of a, yes.
Way up.
Yep. I know that property as well.
Also looks like it's in the right-of-way.
It is. Do you feel that that fence is complying with the ordinances here in Asbury?
Clearly it's not.
That's irrelevant.
Well, he's asking for it, but is it, is it something that's complying?
Wouldn't matter.
I don't think we need to take it into consideration.
I also don't think it matters whether the property across the street has it either. That property is not before us right now. And as you know, every property has to be decided on its own merit, Mr. Fox, so...
And we don't know when that was constructed and what might have been allowed at that time.
I'm not saying it's legal or illegal, that's really not the reason why I'm putting it before you. And I agree totally, every property is on its own merits, but in zoning and planning, of course, we all know that the character of the neighborhood and what you're asking to do, how that impacts on the neighborhood and what they're doing, and whether or not what you're doing is going to be negative impact on the area, is something you should consider. It's not, it's not to be all...
Design exceptions. Design exceptions do not require, do not require the negative...
I don't have to prove the negative, but what I'm saying is, I don't have to prove...
And we don't know that that is conforming or not conforming, so using that as...
The only thing is, that's the character of my neighborhood.
That's fine, okay, that's fine.
That's what I'm saying.
You put whatever value on that, you please.
And I temper that, because, I mean, I've been up and down Pine Street enough times, you guys, and there are plenty of chain link fences on the Pine Street front edge of corner lots. So, character notwithstanding, I think it's a mixed bag of fence styles, many of which are open style, because that has been the prevailing standard.
And I don't think, and I don't think one example dictates the neighborhood character.
But may I ask a question?
It's just next to a neighbor. Yes.
I think it's a question for Donna. The white fence that's here with the weave on top, is that still considered a solid fence?
Or 6 foot, because it's...
Well, so I'm looking at it, and I think it's a 3-foot solid fence with a 1-foot open lattice. You know...
But it's on top of a big...
But we're not here for this particular...
There's issues with height as well as openness with that particular fence.
I'm just trying to understand, if somebody puts lattice on the top of the fence, does that turn it from solid to open?
No.
No.
Thank you.
That's all I want to know. Thank you.
It's a good question.
I don't want to get hung up on it, I'm just saying that, you know, that is the person that we're looking right across the street at, so...
So that's a style you feel is a compromise from what you've got, 6-foot solid.
Right.
You could go lower with a little openness, not full openness.
We're here to interact, to have an interactive process. This is, it's kind of a weird application, it's not a variance, it's an exception. We don't need site plan approval. Exceptions under the land use law are typically asked for as part of site plan approval. I don't even know where it fits, okay? It's clearly not a C variance.
No, it's not. It only requires positive criteria, doesn't require the negative.
So, you know, there are some, and you can sit down, there are some things that we would argue that are exceptional about the property, that are different from others. Even, you know, even though you guys have different ones too. A corner lot that's elevated is clearly unusual, okay? Because of the fact that you don't have a backyard.
That is not unusual.
It's not unusual in Asbury.
Highly usual in Asbury Park.
It's unusual in zoning and planning, because typically, okay, you have a front yard set back and a side yard and a rear yard. You don't have that on a corner lot.
Not in Asbury Park.
It's very typical in any property. All corner lots have front yard, two front yards.
Two front yards.
You're always facing this issue in an urban environment on a corner lot.
And we intentionally relapse the fence regulations as part of the ordinance amendments for corner lots, so that we could accommodate some privacy for people with corner lots.
So you don't like that argument? How about the fact that it's, how about the fact that it's...
It's part of my character and established, but the thing is, you know...
I don't want to argue with you. I'm just trying to make an argument.
We have a predominance.
I don't want to be adversarial. I'm just trying to make an argument and create a record here, that's all.
I understand, but...
So I think that that's...
We all are very well aware that many lots, if not the majority of lots in town, tend to be elevated above the street level. It's a characteristic of lots in Asbury Park. Many houses have multiple steps coming up to the front porch and the back porch because of, you know, the amount of fill between the sidewalk and the house.
And do you differentiate in the ordinance between a lot that's elevated and one that is not?
No.
And I would say that that's probably not something that makes a lot of sense, because if you're trying to have something that's, that has some privacy, everybody wants privacy.
Why not?
There are ways, there are ways to get privacy.
Without making fortress.
There are ways to get privacy.
If, if...
We're open to hearing it.
Well, why don't you offer some?
Why don't you...
Because it's not our job to design it for you.
Time out. I think, I gotta, I'll get us off the mark and get us back on the track. If you're offering a compromise designed similar to the one across the street, why don't we focus on finding out if the board likes that? Instead of going round and round about corner lots and elevated lots, all the lots down Pine Street, a lot of them are elevated, especially on the west side, all the way down to Sunset. So it's a common characteristic. I know, I went to grammar school across the street, so...
That's not elevated, that's flat as a board.
No, 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 weird. Weird.
At school.
Oh, yeah. I'm saying on the west side of Pine Street from First down to Sunset, not, not the east side, not, not the south side where Mount Carmel is. No, that's flat. But going here, there are the corners, down, down on Fifth, there's elevation, and on Sunset, there's another, but that's irrelevant. The point is, is if you're offering a compromise...
I mean, the standard is of trying to create an argument that there's some uniqueness here of the property that would allow it.
I understand.
But we're going back to...
Those are my arguments. You don't like them? I'm out.
We weren't asking...
That's what, that's what my job is, to try to create an argument.
Let her talk, please.
We're not asking to make an argument to us. I think the question was very direct. What do you propose to do? Let us hear what your ideas and...
We would like to keep it as it is, obviously.
That's not an option for me.
That's not an option for me.
Me neither.
That's what the application is.
So do you have any other options for us to look at?
We're happy to, we're going to have to do something.
Correct.
And the fellow who put the fence in is going to have to bear the burden of that.
Do you have any other design ideas that you would like to submit to us?
There are a multitude of options that we could do.
Please.
Take the fence down completely and have no fence whatsoever.
You could.
You could.
We could have an open fence that's lower than the height that we have, that complies with your ordinance.
Sounds good to me.
We could have, we could have, and that could be wood, it could be metal, it could be vinyl, it could be any or all of those.
Great.
We could have one like the, like the fence across the street, which is partially not open, and then open at the top at a certain level. I mean, there are, like...
Which one, which would the applicant, instead of running through our...
What do you, what do you propose? What do you want us to consider?
We're not a design board. You have to bring us the designs.
You've got to tell us what you're going to do.
Can I answer?
Yes, answer please.
Or if Debbie says, no, I can't tell you.
Go ahead, answer. We want to know.
My recommendation, let me see which one it is, would be to basically take this six-foot wall, make it four feet to match what used to be there, and space out the slats so that it's an open fence.
So it's a horizontal slat right now?
It is.
So you take out every other slat?
Would it be every other?
We could take out every other, or we could take them all off and space it out. I don't know what the rules are.
You might want to probably space it rather than taking out a slat. You're going to have a couple of inches there then.
Yeah, you're going to have four inches.
I don't know if you're going to be able to get away with just taking slats out. I don't even know if the fence will stand up to that.
It should, so it's four by fours with slats attached directly to the four by four.
Okay.
So I can take them off.
I have the same fence.
But only four feet high.
Is a, is a board on...
Would you consider backing that fence off of the retaining wall, giving a little bit of a buffer?
Potentially. That's more work than I can do myself. Like, the other work I can probably do myself. We have to move the fence, then it's probably going to rely on what happens next for this contractor. But potentially...
If you create enough space there to plant, you can create really good blockage and privacy.
Yeah.
Landscaping is always the, the method of choice here.
Yes. The issue is that, this isn't maybe the best one. So this is the entire width of our yard. So that's all we've got. So depending how much we back it up, it starts becoming unusable on the side yard. And that is our backyard, so...
It's your second front yard. I know, it's hard, I know it's hard, but you gotta, you gotta keep saying that to yourself, because it's not a backyard, unfortunately.
You don't have a backyard.
You don't have a backyard.
You don't have a backyard.
What it has to be pushed.
Isn't it five feet?
Well, that's the standard.
You can make it closer.
I was asking the standard, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the standard.
You could apply a, you know, a percentage rule, his, you know, width is narrower than the standard, whatever, so you take a percent.
So would the idea be...
For me, I would like to see the fence setback from the retaining wall. I just find it very affronting as I'm passing by, because I pass by your house all the time.
It almost looks like a blockade.
Yeah, it's unwelcoming. So to see it setback, see it opened up, it would be nicer.
To Russell's point, would you want it setback just a sufficient amount to allow for planting?
Yeah. So it's like, so is the idea of, we pull it back and then have some green in the front of it?
Well, I think the planting is up to him, up to the applicant. Quite honestly, I just want to see it off the, off the wall and then off the retaining wall.
Well, to your point though, about the, you know, being imposing right over the street, the...
The shrubs can be the same way.
The shrubs would definitely soften that effect.
Exactly.
Give more, as Russell said...
But you're going to need at least, you're going to need three feet.
At least.
To be, you know, happy there.
And then you're going to worry about the roots affecting your wall.
Yeah. We, so it's hard to tell from these photos, but do you see how the gate is kind of set back where the stairs are? So the easiest thing for us to do would basically be, if we're going to push it back, would be to push back to where that gate is.
How far back is that?
I think it's about three feet.
That's good. For plants?
That would give you plenty of room for planting. And you don't have to plant a big head, you can just, anything green that's going to come up to soften the wall is going to be helpful. You can get small plants, they'll grow three, three feet, four feet, don't make it look a lot.
And then you're going to open it up so there's really a seat hole.
Yes. And how, how open does a fence need to be to be considered open?
I'm sure there's a rule about that.
Donna, isn't it 50%?
Yeah. So, you know, so you're going to jump the height. And, or, so we're saying four feet on top of the height of the retaining wall, so the overall effect is...
So the wood will be four feet.
The fence will be four feet.
Right.
So, so yeah, you have to, again, depending on whether you do the alternating slats or do some combination of double, double wide open.
We should probably be clear that if he does the alternating slats, that would be okay. If that, if that works.
If the ordinance says 50%, then...
Whatever that equals.
So that would be every other slat.
It's equal to 50%.
And I will tell you, those open slats are vital if you are going to plant on the other side to get sun. That's what the slats are really there for.
And a cross breeze.
Yeah.
Honestly, it makes a big difference.
I have a question. Is this also forced to have an open fence on the side? So it's, it's the side of the house? I understand it's the front, but it's also there?
Yeah, so, but also raises a good point.
About the back?
The, the section that's next to the house and Pine Street, are you going to modify that section as well?
I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. So there's, there's a section of fence that goes from the corner, front corner of the house to the fence on Pine Street. That also is not allowed to be six-foot solid, so...
Right.
Are you going to do the same treatment in that section?
It's going to be four feet along.
Yeah, can make it consistent.
Would have to be.
You can't have six feet and four feet, it would look strange.
My question is, is that allowed to have the six feet? So what is the proposal? Because the back, you've got, you've got the...
So Donna, what's the rules or jack on the rear and his other side? Is it the same, like, what, what can he do there?
On the rear, he's allowed to have a six-foot solid.
Six-foot solid. And what about the west?
He's allowed to have six-foot solid. But only up to the front corner.
It's only front setback.
And now on your west side, when it comes back towards the house, there's not another side piece, the side panel? It goes right to the house?
There's like two feet, maybe three feet.
Like there's an abbreviated panel?
Yeah.
So then Donna, that would have to be...
Same.
Four foot alternating.
For that little, okay. Yeah.
And then, so for the gate, the section for the gate, are you going to, so you're going to set back so it's in line with where the gate is at the top of the stairs?
Yeah, and the gate is behind the house line, so can it be six feet solid or is it four?
No, because it's still facing the street and you have front yard.
So that's going to come down a four feet also?
That is, yeah.
So four feet.
Fifty percent, yeah.
And 50%. How about where the, the, so the back six foot is going to connect with the four foot? Just going to be six connecting to four? Does that have to be set back five feet from, so does that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it's six feet connecting to four?
It has to be at least one foot from the property in line.
Right.
Which, again, if you keep it in line with the top of the steps, it would be more than one foot back.
Right.
So, you know, you're just, and at the particular, this would be four foot, this would be six foot.
Okay. Got it? Understand?
Yep.
We'd be happy to do that. Well, we wouldn't be happy. We'd be happier, we'd be happier than not having it.
You'd make us happy.
Reasonably. No one's ever happy in the water, only reasonably happy.
I don't know how many people are happy in the zoning board.
Okay, so let me recap a little bit. So if we, what he proposes is to set the fence on Pine Street, three feet behind the retaining wall, convert it to four feet high and at least 50% open, however he chooses, whether it's alternating slat or some combination of slat removal. And then...
And that'll continue to the front?
Extends from front to back, and the front is only to...
East and west sides of the house.
To the corner, front corner of the house, where it'll churn back to the house, same, same pattern. And then the, the connecting piece on the west side will also be reduced and changed to openness. You're going to remove all the aluminum fencing.
Yeah, that's part of the easement.
Well, there's, there's aluminum fence that's outside the easement.
There's actually aluminum fence outside the easement, but it...
You're, yeah.
Doesn't make any sense.
I get it.
You don't want to just do the aluminum fence the whole way?
No.
That would be...
I mean, maybe, no.
Okay, so, so, so the section would only be four, less than five feet behind the retaining wall.
It's probably too high. It's probably too...
And then the overall height.
Overall height is too high. So the section is for the height.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would almost argue that the section is set so far back behind the wall, you know, in combination. But...
At that point, it's...
Yes, because of the boards.
I mean, nobody's here objecting, I don't think.
But probably good to include it.
Is that, is that...
Good characterization.
So...
Are you going to do a natural also, or are you just going to do the same?
Well, we were waiting for this to resolve, to stain it, and now it's patinaed, so not sure. We may, we'll have to sand it now if we want to stain it, but the idea was to stain it.
Is it cedar or what is it?
Cedar.
Cedar is fabulous.
That name took a look.
So any further questions for Mr. Tucker?
No.
Should we open it up to the public?
Uh, yes.
Yep. So any questions from the public for Mr. Tucker?
Okay.
Okay.
So we aren't, we, I guess we should have him come back with a revised plan. See?
We can't, we can't move a resolution subject to submission of a plan that's compliant with your changes.
We could do that.
With your guys' review?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think...
I don't need to see it.
I'd then sign off.
This has been torturous enough for Mr. Tucker and Mr. Williams.
I, I've turned off my billing clock a long time ago. This is crazy.
No.
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 These are not required conditions.
No, because we're setting it back.
But we are requiring a permit this time.
We've actually already applied for the permits.
Yeah, they just won't give it to us.
Well, they need a desire. Yeah, once you get it, once everything is done, you will have one in the window.
I know, some of it, you're doing, you're giving the permission for the setbacks and the wipes.
Right.
Yeah, so that Mary Ann can issue. So, all right, I got the conditions, what they'll be, we know what they are. I'm now using the video a lot to get, figure out exactly what we've said.
There you go.
Really. So there's no need to...
You don't even need to take notes anymore.
No, I do that. I still take notes.
Shall we move to a comment from the public and then...
Yeah, move for a comment, if there are any, and then a deliberation and a motion.
Right. So anyone in the public for comments regarding this application? Okay, thank you. We'll close the public session for comments.
Deliberation time.
I, I think it's been an arduous process for, for Mr. Tucker and Mr. Williams, so I, I'm very happy to hear that he's willing, that they're willing to make those changes. And I know the expenses have been excessive, but I'm sorry you've had to go through this whole process, I really am.
Thank you. I've learned a lot.
And actually, before we move a motion, I'd like to have Marie put into the record the...
We have the easements in record, correct?
Well, we don't have the actual hard copy of the easement, but we do have the ordinance from the city granting the easement. So we'll put that in the records, and then we'll make that C1. And I only took an excerpt from the easement.
We have those pictures entered, right? So...
We'll leave those with you.
Yeah, we're fine. This way, there's a protected record. Nobody can say you never got the easement and all that serious stuff.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Serpico. Any other further comments from the board?
No.
Nope.
So...
Motion?
We need a motion?
Sure do.
And make a motion to approve the application with the conditions that have been agreed to, that both Donna and Mr. Serpico have in regards to the fence modifications that you will make. And also that we will not need to see those design changes as long as you comply with our board planner and provide whatever she needs. So, from that point on?
Yep.
Second.
John, you second?
Yes.
Thank you. Only seven members can vote. Walter, Kendra.
Got it. Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Phil Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Yes.
Chairman Christopher Arbeloni?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck.
And I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.